We'd like to welcome all of you to the proceedings of the Grand Rapids Public School Board of Education. It's Monday, December 3. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Grant, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Lewis?
Here.
Reverend Mathias?
Here.
Mr. Ross? Ms. Shaki?
Here.
Ms. Slade?
Present.
Dr. Baker is excused. Dr. Flores?
Present.
Ms. Grant, yes? President Faub?
Present. We have no celebrations, but we have our student reps down at the other end there. Yeah. I should know your names by now, but... Mr. Mohammed?
Good afternoon, Board of Education. The students of GRPS would like to thank you for this snow day. Ha ha ha.
And more to come. But we have everything to do with that, too.
Even though it's a superintendent's decision, right?
Yeah.
It's a good thing that that happened. A lot of students are starting to believe in our being more dependable on the student board, even though, and the superintendent, even though they don't even know them much. And two senior scholars at Ottawa Hills have received full ride scholarships to FAMU, Florida A&amp;M University, covering room and board, tuition, books, and even more. This is the third year Ottawa students have received a scholarship from FAMU, and it's finally becoming a trend that the underclassmen of Ottawa can not only look forward to in the future, but to engage in friendly and educational competition.
That's awesome. Great, thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Mr. Calderon?
Last month, students at Union High School demonstrated their kind side by donating food items to members of the community who are in need. Students donated over 200 items, food items, and freshmen were the ones who donated the most. Now, during this month, a lot of fun and great activities are going to take place at Union High School. Next week, Friday, Talented Students are going to be demonstrated, demonstrating their talent at the Talent Show, and we know that currently 20 students are going to be participating. On the 19th of this month, Union High School is going to have a huge holiday celebration, where 254 students currently in the first grade are going to have the chance to play games, decorate cookies, and create Christmas decorations that they are going to be able to take home. In addition to that, students are going to be receiving a present, which is going to be this little shirt.
Very cool.
And the main point of this celebration is to recruit and retain future Union High School students and families.
Thank you, Mr. Calderon. Mr. Mohammed? Public comment, do we have any reported agenda items?
We do not.
Okay, secretary's report.
Yes, we have received our certified election results. The certified election results from November 6. The general election are officially in. The superintendent and board formally congratulate the following individuals, who will be serving a four-year term, taking effect January 1, 2019, and running through December 31, 2022. Dr. Tony Baker, Kimberly Davis, Dr. Jose Flores, Reverend John Mathias, and Kimberly Williams. Congratulations. Also, we have Battle of the I-96 Holiday Classic coming up. Please mark your calendars for Saturday, December 15, to attend the Battle of the I-96 Holiday Classic, featuring five games for $10, to be played at Ottawa Hills High School. Games featured are Sterling Heights Stevenson versus Wayland Union, Oakhamis versus Rockford, Detroit Henry Ford versus Ben Harbor, Lansing Sexton versus Grand Rapids Union, and Detroit Edison versus Ottawa Hills. Please contact the Athletics Department for information to purchase tickets by calling 819-2010. Salvation Army Angel Tree Donation Site will be held at the Grand Rapids Public Schools District Offices. We are participating in the Angel Tree Toy Drive. Please purchase a new toy and bring the unwrapped gift to the Grand Rapids Public Schools Administration Building at 1331 Franklin Street between 7:30 a.m. and 4:30 p.m. on regular business days. Toys and gifts collected will be delivered to the Salvation Army's drop-off site to be distributed to families in need this year. These items must be received by December 14 at noon.
Thank you. Committee Chair updates. Ms. Shaki, the Finance Committee.
Yes, thank you. Well, the Finance Committee also had a snow day. And so this evening, the Finance Committee members and the Board of Education are seeing these materials for the first time. So I just wanted to call your attention, Board of Education, to a few items that we'll approve individually tonight. So we have our purchasing agenda, we have a donation, and then we have two grants that are being requested for approval. So this evening, on the purchasing agenda, you will see lease of classroom space for the Zoo School for the 2018-2019 school year, a contract for temporary staffing services for the school year for the HR department, a contract for the Grand Rapids Public Museum School for Staffing that's funded through the XQ Super School Grant, and also payment for educational training services from Life EMS at Innovation Central High School that's also funded through a grant. Additionally, the donation is from JCPenney's. They are generously donating school uniforms, also, I'm sorry, Walmart, Kohl's, a variety of other retailers. And then lastly, the grant requests this evening are from the Efficacy Institute and the Grand Rapids Environmental Education Network. If there are any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you. Policy Committee, Ms. Lewis.
We met, and we have some policy changes. And would you like me to do this now? We always forget.
I think we can do it when we're going through the approval.
When we go through, now or later?
I think later, when we go through the action items.
Okay, we had our meeting, we approved some things, we discussed some things, and we'll be presenting it later.
All right, thank you, Ms. Lewis. We have stepping in for our superintendent, Dr. Ron Gorman. Superintendent's report.
President Faub, members of the board, I would like to ask Chief of Staff, Mr. Larry Johnson, to come forward. He'll provide a report on inclement weather procedures. Mr. Johnson?
Here's the guy, this is the guy who say thank you for this.
Good evening, Dr. Faub, President Dr. Faub, board members. Dr. Gorman, just a quick overview. Every year about this time, we begin to look at inclement weather procedures. And as you know, we try to make those decisions no later than 5:30 in the morning. Because now that we have some buses that are moving as early as 5:15 in the morning, some of our yellow buses, it's important for us now to try to make that call by 5 a.m. And we do that by preparing ourselves the night before, getting our drivers out on the road, working with the law enforcement agencies, or role-commission various cab companies that are moving around. Of course, that's a rarity now with the cab companies. But we do everything we can to check some of our major streets to see if they're being plowed. One of the determining factors is always wind chill factor, whether or not the major streets have been plowed, whether or not our lots have been plowed, and then if there's a coat of ice up under the snow. We, this year, it's something that we did this year that we haven't done before. We are also talking to Region 3 superintendents just to get a feel for what's going on, as we know that some of our students and our staff members are traveling from outside the city into the city. So we want to take that into consideration as well to make sure folks can get here as safely as possible. If we can make that decision before 11 p.m. the night before, we will try to make that decision so parents can make the proper arrangements for their sitter arrangements the morning, for the next morning. But what we want to do is make sure that folks, particularly our students and staff, can get to school safely. And when at all possible, we will make the recommendation to the superintendent to communicate to you that we will cancel school, so.
Any questions? Any questions from our student reps? This is the man. You want to know who makes the decision? You're looking at him.
We got one day this year already.
There was zero last year.
So we should be good for about five years right now.
All right. Thank you. We have several action items tonight. Hopefully, we can move through them. The first is the resolution to ratify and affirm a summer tax levy. We have the public hearing preceding this meeting. Do I have a motion for approval?
Second.
Any discussion? You ready, Ms. Grant?
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross is absent. Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker is absent. Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes? President Faub?
Yes. Great. The next is similar, and we also have the hearing for it. It's the annual summer property tax levy resolution. Do I have a motion for approval?
Second.
Any discussion?
All right, Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross is absent. Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Ms. Slade? Dr. Baker is excused. Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes? President Faub?
Yes. So M.A.S.B. asked Ms. Lewis to serve, but she needs the nomination of her fellow board members. So does any of our fellow board members want to nominate her?
I will certainly nominate her.
Thank you, Ms. Slade. We have a second for that nomination.
Thank you.
Any concerns? Any concerns, any deliberations?
Concerns perhaps, but...
Good luck.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross is excused. Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker is excused. Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes? President Faub?
Yes. Reverend Mathias had asked that Ms. Coolin come down to give us a little background before we approve this grant from the Efficacy Institute.
Good evening, Board of Education. The grant is actually from the federal government, and it's under the auspices of Title II. And so we had chosen to work with Efficacy Institute to provide our staff, our teachers, and our principals to continue building a capacity to address the issues of equity. And as, I want to use the language of Jeff Howard, who is with the Efficacy Institute, to break the cycle of underdevelopment of students' potential, which is really important to us. Our students have high potential, and we need to be able to provide them the rigorous curriculum and experiences to really reach the proficiency levels. So it's a $400,000 grant. We were fortunate to get one out of the state of Michigan. And it will work on the mission, the mindset, and the methods that teachers and administrators use in transforming their classrooms to better serve student needs. So if there's a specific question I can answer, I'm happy to do that.
Any questions for Ms. Coolin?
So, couple of questions. One is, you're saying here that this is going to be applied in particular to those schools that are part of the CAST? Is that correct?
It will first go to schools that are CSI and TSI. Those are the targeted support improvement schools that are named by the state. And the other one, the CSI, are the comprehensive support improvement schools. And then some of those are also include the CAST schools.
So what's the difference? I'm sorry, CSI.
Well, we call them CAST within our district, because they were formerly known as the priority schools in Sunset language, when in a way we just continued with the language of CAST. And not all the schools are classified TSI or CSI. And so we continued with that language. It's the schools who have the highest need for the greatest growth.
And how many, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just wondered about the most growth.
We want to achieve the most growth for our students in those schools.
Question, this is obviously a grant that we applied for, requiring a proposal, correct? And a needs statement?
That is correct.
Whether we call that an as-is statement or whatever. Just wondering how we determined what our needs are. First of all, let me say that it is a great effort that I think that we ought to be engaged in. But just how did we determine our needs?
Well, first, we used the state definitions for the CSI and the TSI schools, the targeted support.
Okay.
So those were our primary. And then we continued down our list, because the schools that are in the CAST are the highest need schools. So those are the ones, and we haven't selected the specific schools yet. What we did is we did it by the number that we could cover with the grant. The highest amount that we could apply for was 400,000. So we knew with, we'd worked with the Efficacy Institute to calculate what our budget would be. And so it would be 60 school administrators and 140 teachers. But we committed to the CSI and the TSI schools first, and then we'll go to the CAST list.
Great, thank you. There's no more questions. Can we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
Support.
Any deliberations?
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross is excused. Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Ms. Slade? Dr. Baker is excused. Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes? President Faub?
Yes. Next, we have approval of a grant from the Weggie Foundation to continue the work of the Grand Rapids Environmental Education Network. Do I have motion for approval?
Second.
Any discussions? Concerns? Oh.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All right, please take the helm.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross is excused. Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Ms. Slade? Dr. Baker is excused. Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes? And President Faub?
Yes. I missed the purchasing agenda.
I wasn't going to let you forget it.
All right, glad everybody's watching me here. All right, do I have motion for approval of the purchasing agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion?
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross is excused. Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Ms. Slade? Dr. Baker is excused. Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes? President Faub?
Yes. Next is approval of the donation for the school uniforms that Ms. Shaki mentioned in her report. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion?
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross is excused. Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Ms. Slade? Dr. Baker is excused. Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes? President Faub?
Yes. Ms. Lewis, if you can explain?
Yes, I will. Hopefully, they're all lined up. Section 3,000, but it's 3,100 we have to look at. It's the annual operating budget. This policy has been amended to include the provision of the policy that was stated here in 3050, that required the superintendent to keep the board informed during the budget planning process and to secure input from the board through discussion in the workshops. By including this language in this policy, it allows us to eliminate policy 3050 budget planning, as it was the only provision contained in that policy. So basically, what we're doing is we're adding 3050 to 3,100.
With Ms. Pitt's leadership, we are cleaning these policies up beautifully. So anyway, approval for the changes to the first reading of 3,100. Do I have a motion? Support?
Support.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross is excused. Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker is excused. Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes? President Faub?
Yes. Do I have a motion for the elimination of policy 3050?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion?
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross is excused. Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker is excused. Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes? President Faub?
Yes. Ms. Lewis?
Policy 3280, borrowing and debt service. The recommendations for changes to this policy are grammatical in nature, and there were no substantive changes made to this policy. But we still have to change it.
Motion for approval, first reading of 3280?
So moved.
Support.
All right, Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross is excused. Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker is excused. Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes? President Faub?
Yes.
All right, policy 5410, professional staff contracts. This policy has been amended to specify that employees who are required to hold a Michigan teaching or administrative certificate to perform the duties of their positions are required to have contracts. This is a requirement of the law, and it also allows other employees to be given a written contract with the approval of the superintendent.
Motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion?
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross is excused. Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Ms. Slade? Dr. Baker is excused. Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes? President Faub?
Yes.
All right, policy 5500, teaching staff probation and tenure. This policy was amended to specify that teachers who receive tenure in another Michigan school district shall be on probation for only the first two full years of employment.
Motion for approval?
So moved. Second?
Second, support.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross is excused. Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Ms. Slade? Dr. Baker is excused. Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes? President Faub?
Yes.
All right, last one, 5710.
Second to the last one.
Yes, right, almost the last one, yeah. The committee recommends elimination of this policy as compensation will be negotiated and contained in collective bargaining agreements, and there is no reason to have a separate policy that stated this way.
Motion for approval of the elimination of policy 5710?
So moved. Support.
Any discussion?
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross is excused. Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker is excused. Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes? President Faub?
Yes. I'm going to ask Ms. Pitts to come down to, since the board tabled that reading and came back to committee, and Ms. Pitts suggested some changes. We had a discussion, so I thought it'd be helpful to give a bigger picture around it.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Faub, members of the Board of Education, and student members. Thank you for this opportunity to do some responses to the statement that the union president, Ms. Collins, had made at the last meeting, and also to clarify some things about the policy. So I'm going to, actually, I wrote some notes, so I'm actually going to read them, okay? So currently, the law requires that teachers who receive an ineffective performance evaluation for three consecutive years be dismissed. The substantive change to this policy includes the language that the superintendent may also recommend for dismissal, any tenure teacher who receives a minimally effective performance rating for three consecutive years. It is not a requirement, but it does give the superintendent the authority, if she or he believes it's warranted, to ask the board to dismiss the teacher. The policy does not prevent the superintendent from dismissing a teacher for other reasons that are not arbitrary or capricious, as long as they are in accordance with the procedures set forth in state law. And it's important to note that the superintendent may recommend dismissal, but the tenure teacher has the right to appeal the decision to the board and then to the teacher's tenure commission, so there are ample due process protections built into the law and into our own internal procedures. So you may ask why the administration is recommending this change. It's because we believe that our students require and deserve effective teachers. Research shows that effective teachers are the most important factor contributing to student achievement. Although curricula, reduced class size, district funding, family and community involvement all contribute to school improvement and student achievement, the most influential factor is the teacher. We continue to have legislative and Michigan Department of Education mandates that make effective teaching even more important. For example, the consequences of students if they don't meet the requirement of third-grade reading law can be devastating. We are simply raising the bar, and we're asking the board to make a policy statement that reinforces the expectation that our students will have effective teachers. We know that everyone can have a bad year, and we've accounted for that by giving them three years. We believe that if you haven't been able to become effective in that amount of time, provided that the administration has followed the evaluation procedures and have provided meaningful support, then they should no longer teach our students. I also want to make clear that this policy change does not affect the actual evaluation instrument. Eric Harmson, who leads our evaluation process from the central office, met with the GREA in November to discuss the actual evaluation instrument, and we're going to make a few changes that they recommended. We believe we have a fair and transparent evaluation system as required by law. We also have additional protections for employees by always requiring second observers for anyone rated minimally effective or ineffective. All of our evaluators are trained annually, and we have provided appeals above and beyond what the law requires. After listening to some of the union's objections at the last board meeting about the policy, we did remove the language about three years of minimally effective ratings turning into an ineffective rating. We also included the reference to the Michigan Council on Educator Effectiveness. We sent these changes to the union before the ad hoc policy committee meeting, and I have received no further feedback from them. Finally, although I believe this policy change was consistent with the law, I also checked with our outside labor council and spoke to two other school law experts, and they all agreed that this policy change was lawful.
Questions for Ms. Pitts.
Will the board be able to see the changes that you talked with the union about, that they suggested you change?
So the change was that, they objected to the fact that the three minimallys would mean it was ineffective. We took that language out.
Okay.
We just said that there's three minimally effectiveness could allow the superintendent, or may allow the superintendent to recommend to the board dismissal. And they also questioned why we took out the Michigan Council of Educators statement out of the policy. And if you looked at our existing policy, that, those recommendations had not yet been implemented. They had not come out. We didn't know what they were going to be. So our policy just basically said, whatever they were, we may amend the policy to comply with them. Well, they've come out, we've done that, so that language was superfluous. However, we did reference that Michigan Council on Educator Effectiveness. Because if you remember what that Michigan Council of Effectiveness did, and to talk about the evaluation system, they only said you need to choose one of four evaluation instruments. You know, we chose Danielson. There was other, there's Marzano, there was the Five Something or others. So, but we chose that, and so we did comply with that, that recommendation. So there was no reason to keep that futuristic language in the policy. And then they also questioned, of course, whether or not this was, they said, they alleged it was illegal. I did not believe so after checking the law, and I asked some other experts just to make sure that I wasn't missing anything, that I hadn't missed any current law that had changed or anything. So I feel very comfortable telling the board that this policy change, and it is discretionary, it's not mandatory. It is within the law. The superintendent did exercise it as long as the procedural and support was given, the procedural guidelines were implemented effectively, and the supports were given. Did that answer your question, Reverend Mathias?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
I've asked on numerous occasions about the instruments that we use for evaluation and the process, and the individuals that we place in the evaluation process, such as the evaluators and their qualifications. Having been a former teacher in this district and having gone through the evaluation process, I have oftentimes raised questions about its fairness and whether or not an evaluation process can be used as a way to eliminate people who you just may not get along with as a supervisor. And I've witnessed that personally, so I'll give personal testimony to that. Can you assure me that 100% of the evaluators that you have trained are in fact educators who have been in the classroom, who have performed those duties, and that we can honestly say that these evaluators understand the pedagogy involved in teaching and learning, that they could run a classroom? 100%?
Well, now, you know, we're talking about human beings, so I can never give you 100% assurance of anything. Although I can say that we did try, because here's the thing. Even if that evaluator had been in the classroom and had, and does understand pedagogy, we're still dealing with human beings, so there still could be some subjectivity in any, any evaluation system. However, we had, and we only have a few evaluators now who are not former educators, only a few. But even if you were, or were not, we won't come forward. We always send somebody else into that school to evaluate, who is an educator, who is not in that school, who doesn't have any perceived bias against the teacher. any perceived bias against the teacher. Now, are evaluation systems, you know, 100% foolproof? No, they aren't. But we all have to be evaluated, all of us do.
I understand that. My question is very specific to qualifications, such as would be the case if I sent someone in to evaluate a neurosurgeon, a heart surgeon, or an attorney, or an architect, without training in that specific field, when someone comes in to evaluate you, that person who is underqualified to evaluate you should not be evaluating you. And my question is to you, that even though you have a process that certifies your evaluators, can you ensure us that 100% of your evaluators are qualified, equally qualified, to the individual that you're evaluating?
Dr. Flores, I, yeah, I heard your question clearly, and I heard her answer that clearly, so I think we can move on.
If you believe that it was answered, that's fine, Madam President.
Well, I heard that she couldn't guarantee that 100%, that there were a few that were non-instructors, but even if you are an instructor, you may be uneven, and they take people who aren't part of that building to come in. I heard that. You may not be okay with it, but she answered that question.
I heard her speak to the process, but not to guarantee that the individuals that are evaluating teachers are in fact qualified to evaluate them.
Well, we clearly believe they're qualified. Now, I believe that our evaluators are qualified. I do believe that. Because we went through a process to try to ensure that they are qualified, and we didn't just bring somebody from GRPS to do that, we brought a national expert to do that and to help us with that. So I believe they're qualified, absolutely. Now, you know, are they 100% expert in everything? Well, you know, I can't guarantee that of anybody.
Madam President.
Question for Sharon. Questions only, we're not deliberating right now.
Well, I have a question for you, I guess, because is this really on topic? Because this policy doesn't speak to the type of evaluation.
I weighed that, but if Dr. Flores is not confident with our evaluation system, on some level, that unearths a whole other group of things, that then there's a whole lot of policies, but on some level, that should be addressed in terms of, do we stand behind our evaluation system, which we have in the past? So I want to keep this on topic. So I actually have a question as regards to this. So in policy, we asked how many teachers would, because we are in a teacher shortage right now, and I think all of us would agree, both as educators and some of us as parents, that none of us want an ineffective or minimally effective teacher in front of our parent, our student, at the same time, we need a teacher there. So how many teachers would this necessarily apply to in our teaching force? How many teachers do we have?
So right now, we have about 11, between 11, 1,200 teachers right now. If we applied this policy today, it would affect five.
Okay.
Last year, four. The year before that, four or five. So we're not talking about a lot of teachers, we're talking about a small number of teachers. And remember, we're talking about three years, not just one year. And so it doesn't, won't have a big impact in, you know, numbers percentage, but it does send a signal and a strong policy statement that we believe our teachers deserve and should and are entitled to effective teachers. And so if we give the teachers as much support, we give them a chance to improve, we support them and encourage them to do that, provide resources for them to do that, and they still can't cut it, then we strongly believe that they should no longer be teaching our students.
Other questions for Sharon before we deliberate?
That was going to be my question, in terms of how we support the teachers that do receive that kind of evaluation. How do we undergird them in order to help them be successful and not just, you know, not just have that mark?
And I can ask for, you know, Dr. Gorman to assist me with that, because he absolutely, you know, obviously is over our instructional program, and, but I can tell you, we do sit down with the, when we do the individual development plan, we sit with the principal, with the teacher, find out what we think the gaps are, and try to provide resources. I don't know, Dr. Gorman, if you'd like to add something first?
Yeah, I think that's especially important during the appeal process. You know, after an evaluation, of course, our instructors have opportunities to appeal their results, and the superintendent, as well as the executive directors and I, sit in on those meetings every single year. And one thing we ask, and is that, is, were you provided the support you needed in the areas on which you were struggling? So that may mean professional development, that may mean working with a mentor teacher who is maybe working with similar students, working in similar content, is getting different results. And so I believe there are ample opportunities to help staff members who are exhibiting challenges. It is, it is never our intent, the first time a teacher receives a minimally effective rating, to say that, you know, you're doing a horrible job and that's the end of it. Our job should always be, if you're minimally effective, let us work on those areas on which you're struggling, and let us help you become successful. We should always be looking to help our teachers improve. At one point, we hired these particular teachers into our school district, so it's, we've put lots of time and effort into supporting our teachers, and we need to continue to do so, even if after one year or two years, those teachers are minimally effective.
There's no more questions. Do I have a motion for approval?
Support.
Deliberations?
I would like to speak against raising our, our language to that level of minimally effective. I think that if they were ineffective, and you've proven that they're ineffective, then yes, go ahead and eliminate someone's career or destroy someone's career. If you've not provided the supports and you've not given them a fair evaluation, and we've arbitrarily used a grading system like Danielson, I just, you know, I feel bad about people who have gone through school, educated themselves, in many cases have master's degrees, and that are confronted by sometimes an unfair administrative team, and that are ostracized in the process of doing their jobs, to the point where they're then evaluated out. Maybe they're people who just speak up, you know, like I have often spoken up, and you find yourself operating against the grain on personality, and then you destroy this person's career. And now we're saying, we're taking it even further, and we're saying from ineffective to now minimally effective. Well, like our union representative, Mary Bowen, said to us, you know, that's like a C minus, you know? So should you fail the class with a C minus? I mean, I just don't think it's fair.
Madam President. As a lifelong member of the Michigan Education Association and one who feels very strongly about unions and about protection for teachers, and also as a grandma of kids in Grand Rapids Public Schools, I do not want a teacher for my girls who has received three in a row minimally effective. Having spent 37 years in the classroom, I can assure you that if someone, if someone is given, if someone is told they're not doing a very good job, and they don't make any effort to improve it for three years, please do not give that teacher Tukira or Kayla. And somewhere along the line, people have to be, have to have their feet held to the fire, because my experience in teaching was that there were a lot of people who just were able to float by on minimally effective or whatever, and I don't want those people teaching my kids, at least.
Reverend Mathias?
It seems to me that both as a board, I think over the last, you know, four years or so, we've really talked about it, deliberated about how we support our teachers, and so I think as a district that's, that has been changed, gone through that process of growing, that we are also raising the bar in terms of the teachers that we want to hire and we want to support throughout that time. And it's been a learning process of that. There has been a culture here, but also I've seen that culture changing. And so for me, that's, that's an encouragement, and certainly this policy reflects, to me, that growth that we're, that we're headed towards. You know, the fact that she can report that there are less and less people who are not educators, although they're qualified to be able to give that, to me, is evidence that we are, that we are continuing to head in that right direction and are getting there. So I'm encouraged to see that. And again, I think as a board, we certainly are focusing on those for our parents, for our teachers, and I think our union.
Ms. Grant?
I think that there are often colleagues of mine who have comments about what we are doing for students in GRPS that are black and brown, and I don't think that this is about ruining anyone's career, but if we're talking about the supports that we're giving those students, they deserve educators who are willing to work hard, and if they have an evaluation that they don't like, come back and have a stronger year than next year. When we're talking about what these children need to go into the world and thrive, they need someone who is excelling at their craft. Those students need to see those things, and they are coming up against so many things in the world that are moving against them. What they can't have is a minimally effective person teaching them. And I would, I would think that with comments that some of my colleagues make, that they would be the ones who would be supporting that. I definitely support people, if they have a bad year, coming back and having a stronger one, or asking for those supports, and I believe that the district will be willing to provide those supports.
Any other comments? Yes, I want to make some comments. I, first of all, I respect and appreciate Ms. Bowens and the union speaking to a policy and paying attention to the extent that we're passing a policy that changes some of the approaches to job security. So that is their role, that is their job, and I respect it and I appreciate it. I think there's an extent to which the board needs to support and stand behind the evaluation policy that we've approved. There's been a long, deep, rigorous, extensive process that the district has engaged in and trying to develop the most effective evaluation tool possible, given some of the parameters we're given from the state, that neither the union nor us agree with some of this, you know, 20, 40% student growth, you know, mechanism. But the extent to which we can, we have tried to develop a very substantial, meaningful diagnostic evaluation process, as Dr. Gorman explained. We are here to get the best teachers, to get teachers, to hire teachers in, to make them the very best they can be. We are not in a, if there were teachers waiting to get jobs, we are in a teacher shortage crisis. So in that context, I also understand the need to evaluate if somebody is not stepping up despite the support you have given them. You cannot have them in the classroom any longer. You need to have somebody effective. So it's a small number, there's still due process within that, there is no, there should not be arbitrary and capricious, because there's due process that has to be documented to a great extent. So, and there's a last resort. So I think this is well within reason to give the ability to make sure that the very best teachers are in the classroom. So I am supportive of these changes with respect to Ms. Bowens' comments and the discussion we've had on the policy committee, so. Ms. Grant?
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross is excused. Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Ms. Laid?
Yes.
Dr. Baker is excused. Dr. Flores?
No.
Ms. Grant, yes. President Faub?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is the Consent Agenda grouping. Do I have motion for approval?
Support.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross is excused. Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Ms. Laid?
Yes.
Dr. Baker is excused. Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes. President Faub?
Yes. Oh, I'm really slipping. I never had approval for the agenda. I'm assuming that. There have been no objections. Hopefully that doesn't make everything invalid or something. We have no discussion items? Do we have public comment?
We do not.
We do not. Dr. Gorman?
No comment, Dr. Faub.
Ms. Shaki?
All right, well, Ms. Lewis, I just want to thank you for serving and representing us on the MASB Board of Directors, so thanks for taking that leadership role. And then I just want to applaud my colleagues tonight for having high standards for instruction in our schools. That will always be a priority for me, for my two children who live under my roof, and my nearly 17,000 children who go to school every day in our schools. Thank you.
Dr. Flores?
Thank you. I'd just like to explain that certainly we all want highly effective teachers. And, you know, when I vote no on things, it is because of my experience here in the Grand Rapids Public Schools, and it was a wonderful experience, you know, over 30 years. And I have, I have, I have taught with highly effective teachers, and I have been rated highly effective most of the years of my service. But I also have seen the abuse in this, and I've seen teachers driven out of the profession. And we have a profession right now that is not, it's not an attractive place to work in terms of the profession, and then, you know, Grand Rapids also, I guess, has, has a reputation. And I think that if we're going to raise the bar, as we will, and I know it might not, it might sound like I'm deliberating this issue, but I want you to understand just why I vote no, okay? Or why I voted no on this. And that is that, that if we're going to raise the bar on instruction and process, then we need to be fair in the process. We need to have qualified educators evaluating educators. You know, I was evaluated my last year by a person who had an associate's degree. Outrageous, outrageous. I don't know what you, how you would feel if someone came in and evaluated you, who is not at your level of educational expertise. And I was, you know, I protested vehemently and received a different evaluator eventually, after having gotten a bad evaluation from this unqualified individual. This is my own personal experience, and I know that I have spoken with other educators in this field that feel like they do not value their work or their expertise. And if you read across the nation, the response to this, this one-size-fits-all Danielson rubric being used as a metric to evaluate our effectiveness in the classroom as educators, that there's a move against it. Even Danielson said that the instrument was, or her process that was developed was never intended to be used as it is being used. And I've stated that before, but perhaps on deaf ears. So that's why I voted no.
Reverend Mathias?
I wasn't here for our last meeting, and I didn't get to talk about the academic committee, but just...
We talked about it without you.
You did?
No, I'm joking. Go ahead, go for it.
But hopefully for the future, we want to bring either before the board or in a board session, school safety and just the whole breadth of what you probably saw in the committee report there. We had a lot of questions, and so hopefully we'll have an opportunity to have Larry Johnson come up here or in a board work session and really talk about some of the nuts and bolts of what we're doing, so. Okay, ma'am. I guess that's it.
All right, thank you. Ms. Lewis, aren't the new, what did I, what should we just talk?
Well, I had elected you, actually.
Oh, we just nominated you. Got it, got it. First step towards greater glory.
I know, greater glory won't come until probably February or March, so. But anyway, I have enjoyed our tour, meeting with the community and searching for our, the qualities we need in a new superintendent, and I've enjoyed talking to the, the teachers that have been there, the parents, community members, and it's been an interesting experience. And I assume Mr. or Dr. Baker might be at City High tonight, and then do we, we have one more?
I think he's out of town.
Oh, okay. I thought maybe he was over at City, because that's the one we're not going to get to do tonight, but I think we have one more going, don't we? Sibley, yep. I've enjoyed that, thank you.
No comment?
I, you know, I don't get in the schools as much as I used to, I guess, as I'm on my way out, but I had the opportunity to be at Campus Elementary this. I'm looking for, Ms. Chaney, I don't see her, but I had a chance to watch some of the children being tutored by one of our partners in the community, and it was really a very grounding and wonderful experience to see some of these children at Campus Elementary, first graders, learning to read, trying to learn to read, and recognizing the work that our educators have every day when these children come in, that... children come in, the eagerness and the desire that these children have to decode text, very difficult cognitive activity, and the range of challenges each of them have, and the extent to which we have community partners, and we have extraordinary educators every day taking these young people and introducing them into the difficulty and the challenges and the joys of reading. And it was really, it was grounding, and it was fantastic, and I just want to express my appreciation to everybody in this district that is working towards making that happen. So, thank you. Meeting adjourned.